fence to it.
You should have hung in, that's what I got the same thing, but I just stayed on and eventually, you know, frankly.
I'm multitasking, we're just finishing up Meals on Wheels. They needed an extra person to draw things off today. But anyway, if I had the floor, I would like to float something, just as an idea.
Go ahead.
Actually, might as well get started, right? We have everybody who's gonna come.
Hey, is Michael still trying?
Mayor.
Is Michael Keys still trying to get on, or?
He was, that I knew of, but I, I don't have any video, or I'm just got a phone pad site on mine.
I don't see him on yet, but.
I don't see Michael.
He is not on yet.
I talked to Mike about this a little bit last night, so he's aware of.
Yeah, Ed, if you want to go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I've been just thinking outside the box a little bit. You know, the value of the water authority is the water. So we might have an option of selling the water, keeping the buildings, and then leasing the buildings to the people who buy the water because they need those buildings. They're the only ones that would have any use for those buildings. They're all, you know, they all have a designated job, for the most part, other than the administrative building right on the bay. Uh, I don't know if it's something that could be done. I'm just know that we're in trouble financially, and anytime we can think outside the box, it might be a good idea. I throw it out, did I make it clear what I'm talking about, or does anybody have questions for me?
So, well, I don't know, I guess from our consultant end of it, they said it's, everything is worth $500 million. So I don't know how they would, how would they, whether the buildings, how they assess the, go ahead, Ed.
The majority, yeah, the majority of value, I think, probably comes from the income approach. In other words, the amount of water that we are selling gives you the value of the, of the venue. Okay? If we kept those buildings, uh, and didn't lease them back to those people, for the most part, uh, not too many people would want them. They're specific buildings for a specific reason. Uh, if that makes any sense. I mean, Mr. Voitek's building another beautiful place just off West Grand Avenue there, the other, the other reservoir. Again, it's gonna be a beautiful building, but anybody who would own the water would wanna own, or not, we don't want them to own it, we want them to lease it from us, with them, you know, taking full responsibility for the maintenance and so forth. It's just something to float out.
We have Michael Keys now, I'm gonna start the stream. Great, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I, I think I'm.
I mean, yes, Ed, that's a option that I don't think we've ever even thought of. I don't know, and I'm sure it would take more thinking, that's for Doggone Sure, to figure out if, how it could work, and how beneficial it would be. I guess it would come back to, I would say, come back to.
I'm sorry, Mr.
That's all right. That's all right, I, go ahead.
Yeah, the reason I came up with this idea is when I, I was reading the appraisal reports and everything, because of the pandemic, they didn't even see the buildings. So they couldn't put a whole lot of value, other than depreciate, depreciate the value on those buildings. That, that's when the idea popped into my head. And the new buildings can be beautiful, Ed, if it's when they're done with that. So I mean, we've got, there's a lot of value there, and no, no use shortchanging ourselves on the value. And again, you're gonna need the, the real number crunchers, I'm just the idea guy.
Yeah, and that's something we can certainly look at. I would, I'd like to, though, continue with, with, with what we're, what we've been working on for, oh, really since, about October of last year.
A year.
Yeah.
Yeah, understandable.
And remember, the purpose of what we're proposing is to solve one of our three major financial problems. You guys solved the first one with this year's budget, where you changed the interest assumptions so that we don't have one to two million dollars a year additionally we have to put into the pensions. That was because the interest assumptions were all, were wrong. You adjusted those, and that solved that problem, which I think is gonna have a lot of benefits going forward as well. Because I think, over time, we should be having to put less into the pension, not more, because we have realistic assumptions.
Right.
Second problem, which this addresses, is a huge amount of debt that the city has, that's been put off for over 30 years. What happens is every time we get close to making regular payments, the city, uh, the administration and, and county, former councils have pushed off the major payments and arranged for like two or three years of very low payments. And that's happened regularly for the last 30 years. The result of that is an increase in our debt to the point where, where it's overloaded now, and that debt payment would increase to, uh, our total debt payment would increase to about nine, over, a little over nine million dollars a year.
Starting more, I think.
Two. Uh, so what we're trying to do is solve that second problem, which is the amount of debt the city has, by getting this prepayment from the water authority, and the majority of that we'd be applying to debt, and it would save us, over the next 18 years, it saves us about $30 million. And that's net. Uh, the fact that we give up, includes the fact we give up the lease payment, and you know, but we were able to pay down the debt so much, that the total debt will, that will pay less, will, will pay $101 million less in debt over the next 19 years. That's about $5.3 million a year. Uh, not all of that's in the general fund, and the general fund will be saving a little over $89 million over the next 19 years, which is about $4,700 per year we save by doing this. Uh, so, and obviously, the amount of money we'll get depends on interest rates at the time, because the water authority will be borrowing this money, on the debt, they'll pay the same amount they would have paid to us. So in that way, it's kind of a net, no change for them. Uh, so, what we just learned, I think as of yesterday, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, we've been talking about, that, the most recent numbers, I think we referred it, that we could get $95 million, which is up five million from what we got at the end of the year. That's because interest rates are down so much. The lower interest rates are, the more the water authority can borrow. Well, they've come down pretty significantly again in the last couple of weeks. If we could do it today, we'd get about $101 million. Uh, we want to use at least 80 million of that to pay down debt. If we get more than 95, we may use a little bit more than 80 million. The other 15 million, we, we want to help get us through this year, next year, and 2022, without any kind of rate increase, uh, tax increase, without any kind of tax increase for, uh, people that pay tax in Erie. And over those.
Tax or rate, Mayor?
No, tax, I'm talking tax increase, I'm sorry.
Strictly tax, okay.
Yes, like the water authority will probably increase rates, will probably have to increase, and we're trying to increase rates, if needed, every year, rather than wait four or five years and then do a 20% increase, uh. Um.
So, that's, that's. For garbage and sewer.
Correct, yes.
Okay, I don't mean to interrupt, I just want to be, so everybody knows we're.
Yes, so what, what we'd like to get to happen next Wednesday, ideally, is you, that you would approve a simple resolution that allows the water authority to prepay their payment and extend, uh, the amount of the lease, or the length of the lease for 10 more years. Uh, it, it just, you may have seen this already, but it'll read, uh, "It's a resolution authorizing proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Erie Water Authority to accept prepayment of its lease with the city of Erie and to extend lease for an additional term of 10 years." We can talk over the next month, month and a half, two months, however long it takes, we're hoping it's quick, and I, I have tried to, uh, get Paul, Paul Voitak, I think, is ready to move as soon as we move. He actually has a meeting with his board this afternoon to kind of talk about things. Uh, and I know, if, if you guys will pass that resolution on Wednesday, they will start working on this on Thursday. He's already done some work, but they'll, they'll really get it moving on Thursday. We don't know what rates may do over the next month or two here, uh, but the quicker we can move, the, the more options we're gonna have in terms of when to take this, and how much money we're able to get with it. Uh, so that's what, uh, that's what we're asking to do right now, and again, we can have more conversations about the use of the money. I feel pretty strongly, at least 80 million needs to be used to pay down debt, to solve the city's debt problem. We'll, we'll solve the second of the three major problems in the, in the city's budget if we do this. So let me stop there and just see what questions you might have.
Mayor, I, I appreciate the, these have to be two separate things. The water deal has to be separate to what we're gonna do with it, so if we pass the water deal, we still have to have the discussion on exactly what to do with the 80, or grant you the $95 million. Actually, at the end of the day, 97.5, if we add a 2.5 million, I, I call it a signing bonus, but, uh, a closing fee, as they, it's put on here.
Yes.
I'll be hon, I did talk to you, Mayor, and I said I would reach out to Mr. Voitak, and I did, I did talk to him, uh, and no, there isn't no budging on three, the 350,000 per year, uh, payment that, I guess, wasn't on our original, uh, proposal, but if, if in hindsight, council realize what that is, is it's covering a very good portion of the degradation fees that every, uh, entity has, uh, Pennelect, uh, sewer, or, uh, Water Authority, and even the telephone company, but, uh, so there's no room there, there's really, and it's, it's exact words, but over that term, we're, it's gonna cost us $14 million that, uh, would actually, people gotta realize, come off that, whatever amount it is at the time of the closing. So if it's 101, we are losing 14 million of that paying back. Um, that, that's, that one is a stickler to me that, uh, I wasn't totally happy with, but, uh, more or less, they have the upper hand at this point, because we're in more dire need than they are.
My God.
Um, although we may be saving 101 million on debt reduction, I believe, Mayor, you mentioned, I think, long haul, we're still gonna, I mean, short term, yes, but long term, we're still gonna lose to the tune of probably 80 million dollars in those 40 years. Is that agreeable with the chart that I'm looking at?
Well, that's what the chart shows, but it's, there'll be changes, we expect the water authority will probably be applying to extend their lease, we know they're applying for loans, and they don't have a long enough lease to support the loans, so they'll, obviously, there'll, there'll be negotiations involved in that, we'll get additional money. There's a lot we'll do over the next 19 years, and if I'm reelected, there's a lot I'm gonna be doing over the next four or eight years, to try to make sure that, what we're trying to do is build the city, and the chart you're looking at assumes that there's no increase in, uh, or nothing but a moderate increase in payments to the city. I want to get more people living and working in the city, I want more businesses here, more jobs, that's, that's what my.
Which we all do.
Yeah, and that's what my team and I are trying to accomplish. COVID-19 has kind of slowed us down a little bit, but it's also taught us some things, and I'm, I believe we're, we're going to add, uh, we're gonna add a lot of revenue, uh, which, which will change those numbers, that 80 million you're referring to. And we've got a lot of time to work on that. I mean, I, I think if, if you stay focused on the next 19 years, we're saving a lot of money, and, uh, it puts us in a position to not raise taxes, at least for the next two years, 2021 or 2022. If, if we set aside 15 million right now, you, you may have seen an, another one of Paul's, uh, another one of Paul's, spreadsheets.
Charts?
That, uh, will, you know, I forget what I was gonna say there, but, uh.
Well, I did see one that had the, you know, we could be covered this year, next year, and even into '22, with maybe a little money left over.
Yes.
Why wouldn't we count on keeping that for budgets beyond '23 even?
We could certainly do that, that's part of the discussion we need to have each year as we move forward. I think it's over 5 million, we would, uh, yeah, that, that we, you know.
I know a lot of these are just assumptions, when we look at two and three years down the road, things can change that quick. I just, I don't want this to be a quick fix that, hey, it'll make my life easier in my, rest of my tender, it'll make, uh, everybody's life a little easier short term, if we don't have to raise taxes, but I don't plan on going anywhere in 15 or 20 years myself, um, I just don't want it to sting us in the end and say, well, because you guys, what you did then cost me today, yada, yada, which I know it's tough to see 20, 25 years in the future, but, uh, um, we, if we're gonna look at that, once again, I said it, it's our biggest, if not one of the biggest, uh, decisions we're gonna have to make as council people, I want to, we want to do it right. When the consultant said the, uh, they're figuring the water is worth roughly $500 million, the water system itself, and with that size of a water system, our lease payment should be in the 20-plus million dollar range, and we're giving it at the bargain price of four or five million a year, and at that bargain price, we're gonna add 10 years onto it, I just, those are little questions that equal a lot of money if, I know there's no rego, no renegotiation up to what our current lease agreement is, but by adding another 10 years onto it, we're adding to what we, the city could be possibly making, and what the lease payment should be, I guess, or.
Oh, yeah, another thing you've got to remember with the lease payment, is if, if the lease payment's increased, the amount of people pay for their water is gonna increase by the same amount, by the same percentage. Uh, so, and I did talk.
But.
I did talk to Paul about that, and through, in our negotiations, and he basically, you know, we wouldn't have to increase taxes maybe, but people are gonna be paying what they would pay in taxes, uh, to, to the water authority.
But it would be the whole water system, not just the city of Erie water.
True.
Rates, it would go throughout the water system, which, I, I'm just, I'm looking at numbers and, uh, we just want to do it right, that's all, Mayor.
So do I, so do I, Jim. Uh, what other question?
And I know Mr., uh, um, Brzinski, I mean, he, he came out of left field a little bit with that thought, but that doesn't mean, that, that, that could be something that may work too. I just don't know what kind of time it would take to check into something like that, if we sold the water itself, but kept the buildings and got monies that way. And then we sell it right off the top, and then maybe that's our 100 million, 125 million goose, uh, golden egg, you know, I don't know.
I mean, that's gonna take a long time to, to do, if we're gonna try to sell the water authority. Plus, I know the board does not want us to do that, and they want the first, write a first refusal, if, if we want to sell it, they want to buy it.
Well, they want to, but is that also in this contract or this lease agreement?
No.
This time it is not. Originally, a year ago it was, or six months ago when they came back?
Yeah, I don't think it is, am I remembering that correctly? Does anybody know any different? Haven't actually, Paul?
I never saw any draft, this is at Betsa, I never saw any document drafting that language, it was discussed, but it was never agreed upon by the city.
Yeah, the mayor, the last time you and I and Paul spoke, you told him that was off the table.
Okay. I mean, I think we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity right now to do this, and it doesn't prevent us selling either down the road, uh, but it, it solves one of our major financial problems. There are very positive results for the next 19 years, uh, and we're continuing, we're gonna continue to try to grow Erie, get more jobs here, more people living here, and that's the long term, the best fix, rather than do something, uh, that is one time, if we can start growing Erie back to, it'd be great to get it back to 140,000 again, where we were when I was a teenager, uh, and that would solve a lot of our problems, but this gets, this allows us to do that. This is transformative, uh, it's not short term either, this is a long-term plan. We have a short-term ingredient in it, and I do think we'll have a lot of that, uh, how much, Paul, how much of that 15 million, assuming we set aside 15 million to help us, short term, how much of that would be left, according to your budget, after the first, after 2021 and 2022?
Uh, about $5 million.
Okay, so again, we have the option that could help us in 2023, or?
Yeah.
We could, you know, we could look at, and none of this would be done without city council's approval, for sure. You'll be involved in everything.
Is it an option to put any of this money into the water reserve? Which I'm sure it is an option, but I'm also looking at ways to offset the lease payment we would get from the water authority. Maybe the interest you get in the water reserve would give us some of that general fund money we could use.
Well, we're gonna invest the money, definitely, uh, I don't, I don't see an advantage of putting it in water reserve versus just keeping it on our books. It's gonna be invested, we're probably, with the rates so low right now, we, we'll talk about this in detail, uh, once we get to that time as well, but we'll probably invest it relatively short term, because if you go out longer than a year, you're getting about what you'd get for 90 days right now. But in six months, that could change. So, is that right, Paul, that we'll probably do short-term investing with the funds, but then, three, six months down the road, we, we might do something more long-term?
I, I, yeah, I absolutely agree with you there, Mayor, just with the fact the treasuries are at an absolute all-time low, um, using this money, if, if the deal is consummated and we get, you know, $90 million, if, if, we'd be really remiss if we set this as, and yeah, to answer the question, yes, we're gonna invest this money and use it to the best of our ability, um, and sooner or later, rates are gonna bounce back up.
And we can't pay, pay off all the debt we want to pay off when we get the money, we get it in a couple of months here.
Correct.
Because there's restrictions on when we're allowed to pay things off. So how much do you think we'll be investing, Paul, upfront?
Well, the, the elevens and part of the fifteens, we're gonna, a, a very large majority of it, 60 to 70 million dollars of that money.
All right, so we've got maybe 20, 25 million we can pay down right away, but then we have to wait for time to go by, so we will be investing a lot of this money and earning interest on it as well, as an income.
And we'll be able to, I guess, see if it's better that it's invested, or paying down debt, where it comes out in the end, if we're saving money or making money, I guess.
Right.
You know, if we're making more, leaving it invested, we're farther ahead doing that to help than if we're on the dead end of it. Am I sounding correct with that, or am I?
You're absolutely right, but it's very unlikely we'll be able to earn more, I can tell you just from my 40 years in banking, very unlikely we'll be able to earn more in an investment than we're paying in the debt. Because we are kind of restricted as to what we're allowed to invest in, like, we're not gonna invest in stocks, for instance, because you could lose money there, and we can't take that kind of risk.
Okay.
Uh, this is Michael Keys.
Yes, Michael.
Okay, uh, Paul was, uh, said he was gonna show us some of the other models of whether we're doing like maybe 50 in debt, 50, you know, uh, uh, in savings or whatever, you know, some of the other models that, you know, were presented, uh, council has never seen those. Uh, and so it's, it's hard for us to, you know, put a gauge on, you know, uh, the totality, the all or nothing, you know, uh, we know we don't want to pay $9 million a year in debt reduction, but, you know, there may be some acceptable models out there. Uh, so, uh, I, you know, I know it's now, it's getting close, uh, I, I would like to see those models, they, they want to test my phone, but I, I want to see some of those, the other models. Uh, number two, uh, I got on a little late, I had a little trouble with my phone, uh, so now what's the 350,000 a year for?
That, the, the water authority is requesting that from us in order to do this deal, they're not, and their board has basically said they won't do it unless we pay them the 350,000 a year. Uh, we don't want to, you know, they're not the only utility that pays a degradation fee, that Jim talked about earlier, and we don't want to waive a degradation fee for one, which their degradation fee is about 350,000 a year. So we're asked, and we don't want, we don't want, the other utilities, I'm sure would like to, their degradation fees reduced too. Obviously, they're not doing anything like the water authority is. Instead of eliminating the degradation fee, we've asked them to still pay it, but we will pay them back a payment, we have a payment to the water authority every year, we'll add 350,000 to that, and I would appreciate it if we don't talk about the degradation fee publicly, because, you know, I don't want to start, other utilities to start thinking about that.
Okay, so what do we pay the water authority for every year?
Paul, what's, what's our payment to the water authority?
Michael, we pay them, uh, about $460,000 a year for the billing services of the sewer billing and the refuse billing.
Okay.
And that goes out to the 35,000 customers, you know, once a quarter, and they go out and read the meters and all, all the things, the printing of the paper and the, everything that goes along with that.
Okay, um, two, uh, me and the mayor had a conversation just, do we pay the, uh, water authority anything for actual water usage?
Oh, yeah. Does the city pay the water authority?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, we do.
Paul?
Yes, we pay utility bills and they pay us, they pay us for their usage also.
So we could, we, we could bill for water just like anyone else would, is that right?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we get gas bills and we get elect, we get all utilities, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I asked Paul Voitak that earlier today, and he said, yes, he bills us just like anybody else.
Okay, I glossed over the book, I just didn't see it on the pages I looked at. Uh, do you know how much, approximately?
Paul can find that, I'm sure.
Uh, I could get you that, Michael, I'll get you a three-year average, I'll get that number.
This might be another bargaining chip, but I don't think they're ready to bargain anymore.
I know, I might sign on the deal, but I'm, I'm a little stuck there that we pay regular utility rates, you know, uh, maybe they should be giving us a break on water. I mean, arguably, it doesn't cost $350,000 to pump $350,000 worth of water out of the lake.
I, I understand where you're going, Michael, and who knows, may, I don't know if that would be a bargaining chip, but that would be another deal that, uh, if they do for us, then somebody else is gonna look for that, and I, from talking to Mr. Voitak today, I'm thinking, this is what they're promoting, or, uh, and there really is almost zero wiggle room, not that I am happy with that, but, uh, he.
You know, it, you know, and I understand.
I'm not saying we can't.
That they're doing it for us, but, you know, uh, That they're doing it for us, but, you know, it, it, it looks like a win, 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 win for them, and it's a win, eh, for us.
You got it. I agree with you. It is a bigger win for them, but, but with that being said, let's go with what you asked, Paul, if Paul can see what we pay them for the last, over the last three years on a yearly basis. Who knows? Maybe that can be a little...
Right. Because maybe if we don't have a, you know, a customer that likes us, maybe we do want to sell it. I, I mean, it's, at the same time, we don't want to be taken advantage of.
I guess, I don't feel that they're taking advantage of us. I feel they've, they've negotiated well. They do have to set about nine hundred thousand more aside because of the additional debt they're taking on. They've, they've okayed for us to cover three hundred and fifty thousand of that for them. And that's every year they've got to do that. So we're at a point now, I really like, I, I think this is a huge win for the city. It solves a major financial problem that's been in existence for over thirty years. This is, you know, because, probably because of my finance background, this is the type of thing that I really want to solve, and it's, it's going to help the city for generations to come. I totally believe that. We know for sure for the next nineteen years, we save about thirty million dollars in, in what we pay, what we, what we'll pay to them. And, and that doesn't count the amount of interest we're saving, because we're not paying the loans anymore. That's over a hundred million dollars. I believe this is a bigger win for us as it is for them. Again, they're just trying to cover that, that one additional cost they have. And I really, you know, and if you guys say no to it, that's your option to do, but, you know, I want it on your agenda next Wednesday so we know if we can do it or not, basically.
Mr. President?
Hello, Melvin.
Hello. I think the deal that the mayor administration has worked out with the water authority is a very good deal. It is a win-win. We have problems. We have the opportunity to solve, make the part of our problems. And we need to approve this request on our, at our next meeting so we can move on. You can discuss it all you want. You can discuss till the cows come home. You don't want to waste taxes and you don't want to get the money to take us out of debt so we don't have to raise taxes. You cannot have your, your, your cake and eat it too. You can't do it. The deal is a good deal. They work on it every day. We don't work on it every day. So we don't know the ins and outs. We don't know what the discussion took place. We have to depend on the administration on many situations. You're not there in the negotiation. I'm going to vote yes. Put it on the agenda, man. I'm voting yes.
And, you know, I, I kind of, you know, the tone as in, you know, you're right, we weren't in the negotiation. That, that is true, but we, we are a component of the negotiators. Maybe we should have been in the room, because we obviously have to execute on it. I'm going to vote yes, too, but I still believe, you know, that, you know, I, I still believe that, that, you know, they're skewing the deal by an estimated fifteen million dollars. So when you say we're getting ninety-five, we're not getting ninety-five, we're getting eighty. So you've got to put the numbers where the numbers are.
Paul, if we put the...
More or less, show the, show the whole picture, I guess.
Because you know what? Because I don't want to pay them three hundred and fifty a year. Put the numbers where they are. Turn around and write them a check for fifteen million dollars the day the deal is due and let the people see it.
Paul, do we have that included in our, in the projections?
Not in, not in these, the, the sheets we handed to council last Friday, no.
Okay. Well, we should have had that included. It's part of the deal.
Well, no, the, the sheets we handed out were just on the debt service itself. It, it also doesn't show the two point five million we're going to get upfront, so...
I would like to see this put on the agenda as well, and I am voting for it. However, we can't just pretend we're winning the Lotto here and spend, 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 and then have nothing left for next year. We have to be very wise, because the people who win the Lotto don't always win in the end. So we have to be very careful with what we do with our money. That's so imperative. I would like to see our taxes held as long as possible. Paul, basically, the only option we have is the water deal, right? Because if we don't, our taxes are really going to skyrocket, correct?
We have water, we have our reserves, right, Paul? We have ten million our reserves, I think that was brought up, if we had to tap into it.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just saying, just for this year now, but I, we just want to do it right. We got to make sure, though, if we agree to this water deal, the debt reduction, I'm not saying it's the bad idea, I'm not saying it's the best idea, I'm not saying it, it isn't a great idea. We just, you do the wa, water deal is separate from what we do with the money after the water deal.
Yes, we'll need to talk that through.
Agreed.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing it to spend money on other things. We're doing it mainly to pay down the debt, and then we're, hopefully it'll get us through the next couple of years, and probably maybe the next two or three years that should get us through without a tax increase. But I can tell you, in the first year or two, we're not going to spend the money on anything. We're setting it aside, you know, avoid the tax increase the next couple of years.
I think we're saving money by not opening City Hall, because obviously, the less people that are there, the less water that is being used in the city, not as many flushes, et cetera. But that's not why I, you know, I, I'm looking forward to the day that we can open City Hall for sure. But, you know, there are people in the city of Erie who are living in situations where they don't have water. Their water's, like, been shut off, so we don't want our water to increase our rates as well. We need to have those as stable as possible. So, you know, that's a concern for my, for me, too, because of people, you know, living in such a hardship that they don't have water. I mean, it does happen. So, you know, I am voting for this. I, I do want to see more people coming to Erie and, and having Erie being the great place that I know that it is, because I love Erie.
Well.
Ms. Shaw, unfortunately, that's not going to save your people. The water is estimated at going up five percent a year in the calculable future, so keep that in mind.
You know what? Um, Michael, that is true. However, in being on the water, we actually have very, very low comparable rates to other municipalities in Pennsylvania.
I, I agree, but most of them don't sit on a freshwater lake. I, so, you know, it may not be apples to apples across the state, you know.
All right, guys. I guess we got all the information we have, need at this point. We're not happy with every part of this agreement, by no means, but I believe this was a good study session. I don't know if there's anything anybody else really has to add at this point. Not happy with the three hundred and fifty thousand payment, which equals fourteen mil, whether that's, obviously, it's not negotiable. I found that out this morning. The two point five million at the closing is not negotiable. I found that out this morning. I know in the past, we had six million, six million, and then in oh eight, we had two point five million. That was, according to Mr. Voitek, a hard sell with his board. It is what it is. I'm just, everything I'm telling you is from what I've heard. One thing, there, again, we got to look at all the options when it comes to, and I know the mayor threw out there, debt reduction, all eighty millions. What's it look like if we put forty million in debt reduction and forty million in water reserves? What is it? Sixty and twenty. I mean, I don't want to make your job harder, Paul, but we, this is a very, very, very game changer type decision we're doing.
That's exactly what I want to do.
I, I agree, but...
Trying to change this.
Can we agree to call it the eighty million if we return to fifteen?
I'm sorry, what was that, Michael?
I said, if we're returning fifteen million, we're not really getting ninety-five, we're getting eighty. Can, can we use the correct amount?
Yeah, we'd have to do some calculations, because that, that fourteen million is over the next nineteen years, and we'd have to do a calculation to see how much it is, because a dollar next year is worth less than a dollar this year.
Because I think that if we're going to do it, maybe we should, one last point, is organize them, I guess, in the, in the vernacular, you could call it, you know, whatever the kickback amount is going to be, let's settle that right up front, so we don't have them in our pocket every, every year.
Paul, could you calculate what that three fifty, three fifty K a year for the next nineteen years, what the present value of that is?
Yes, I can. I'm trying to find, trying to find the email where I sent that to council.
Yeah, we'll get that number, and I'm happy to make that public, Michael.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I would also like to see the salaries stay the same and not increase for this coming budget session as well.
Salaries for who?
Well, salaries in general for everyone throughout the City Hall, really. Just because we have that money doesn't mean we can give money for people to have a salary increase. You know, just for instance, my daughter in Florida, who has a college degree, because of COVID, is taking a grocery shopping job for way less than what she was making, and, and that's pretty much United States wide. So we're dealing with that situation right here in Erie. And I don't think we should be giving salary increases to our employees this year.
Yeah, what you're talking about there, Kathy, is a union issue. There, as you know, there's four unions in the city. We did, and that is our third major financial problem, too. Our expenses go up at nine or ten times the rate of our revenue. That's something we can't solve overnight, because we have, you know, contract... I was proud of the fact that last year, with the firefighters, we negotiated a zero percent raise for them this year, one percent next year, one and a half and two, the following two years. And, and I did the same thing with non-union employees. They got no salary increase for this year. We're negotiating with the police right now, and then we'll have Ashley and the other union over the next two years. That, that's our third major financial problem. Our expenses, operating expenses go up so much faster than our revenues, our operating revenues. So that's something, it's a little harder to solve. You know, we solved the, the one problem with this year's budget. This will solve the second problem. We're still working on that third problem, and we will continue to. But I know we can't just freeze employee salaries, especially the union workers. That would, that would be a nightmare.
Well...
On the same, along the same lines, when is the police contract expired?
At the end of this year. It's, December thirty-first expires. So we're in negotiations with them right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, with, with all due respect, we get the monthly updates of who's got a salary change and, and in all actuality, within the last two years, we have well over a hundred thousand dollars in increases in the non-union positions. So if we're going to be fair, this has to go across the board. We have well over a hundred thousand dollars in the management positions in City Hall.
In, last year, we had a hundred thousand increase?
Within the last two years.
Well, I mean, there were increases, you know, they, everybody got three percent, basically. That's, that's what we're trying to change. This year, there...
No, you...
There were a couple of promotional increases, but in twenty, in twenty nineteen, there shouldn't have been a hundred thousand and more...
Not, not per year, but between the two years, they have gone up where the other union salaries may have not.
No, they all, they all went up three percent, basically, for the last two years. This is the first year that non-union employees got no salary increase, that, which is our new policy. But firefighters with them, we're trying to do the same thing with the police, trying to do the same thing with the other two unions.
Yeah.
So what you're looking at is like, what's...
Like the police chief or the fire chief, Mayor, that's what I'm talking about. They, they got some increases, and I'm not saying there isn't anybody who does or does not deserve it. There have been increases to the tune of well over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. But that happened in the last two years, and what I'm talking about is the fact that this year, it was zero. There should have been very, there were a couple of promotional increases, I know, but there shouldn't have been much here in twenty twenty.
Okay. I mean, we get the monthly revised employees where they're let go or have retired or have gotten a wage or salary increase. So, I mean, they're, they're out there in black and white.
Okay.
But, anyway, that's getting off our subject here. I believe, I don't know if there's any other questions from council. Mel, did your Novocain wear off yet?
I'm gonna kill you, Jim.
There you go. I got you on tape now, saying that.
I just think we really have to be careful with that sum of money and how we go about using it. It's so imperative, because, yes, we need to pay down the debt. Yes, we need to keep our taxes and our citizens stable. We need to continue to survive here in Erie, Pennsylvania. I worked for, since nineteen eighty-one, for St. James' Diocese of Erie, and we were a successful school, producing successful students on bare bones with what we have. And you have to make it work, an attitude of gratitude. Do you like your job? Do you like coming to work? Be thankful for what you have. And I just think we need to carry that over. Thanks.
Sure, thank you. Anything else?
All right, all.
Yep.
Well, thank you all for your time this morning. Mayor, thank you very much. Paul, we'll see where we go from here. It looks good on paper, short term? Yes, sir.
No, it's, it's a long term deal. I, I just wondering if you know how you're going to vote on Wednesday yet? The other three have told us. No, it's, it's a long-term deal. I, I just wonder if you know how you're going to vote on Wednesday yet. The other three have told us.
I honestly am not sure yet, Mayor.
Okay, no problem.
And, and it's, it's, it's just, I, I, numbers and, uh, notes and everything, um, and, and it's, I'm sure you have the votes right now, which is fine, but, uh, I said it before, I'll say it again, if not one of the most, it is the most important, uh, vote we're doing, and I want to make sure I got all bases covered.
That's fine. And if you have any other questions, feel free to call me anytime, this weekend, anytime.
All right, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mel.
Yeah, I, uh, I will take Mr. Jim Winarski in the back shed that I got in my yard, and, uh, we'll see how you vote then.
I have no comment on that.
How about the lunch at Arby's or something?
God bless you all.
God bless you, thanks.
Thank you all.
It's a tough job we have. Do the best we can, be honest in everything we do, and we let the chips fall where they may.
Thank you much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, guys.
Have a great weekend. Stay safe.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.